I ask that you would please rise for our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear God, we ask tonight that you fill us with your Spirit of love and unity across our state, our nation, and the entire globe. And as a city, we ask for your help to set aside our differences and look to the greater cause of loving our neighbor and supporting one another in community. We pray for the families of this community. We pray for our businesses, our nonprofits, our churches. And tonight, we pray for this city council and staff, for hearts of compassion and for love and faithfulness, to be evident in every decision that we make. In your heavenly name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, August 16, 2021, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please. Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda. There are no additions or corrections that I'm aware of. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So move, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Under a warning of bids, we have one bid to accept this evening. It's a resolution accepting the quote from Ben Wolden Landscaping for Public Improvement 9769. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yavaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, and members. Yes, last Monday, we received quotes for the Public Improvement 9769, which is a Court Street parking lot improvement project. Local Ben Wolden Landscaping submitted the lowest quote in an amount of $64,350 and 95 cents. The engineer's estimate at the time was $76,000. So I recommend this quote be accepted. This work could begin here in the very near future, and that with substantial completion being this fall for this project. So we're estimating cost share between the Vaden Trust and the city commitment of $50,000 from general MSA to fund this project. So at this time, I'm requesting accept the quote from Ben Wolden Landscaping in an amount of $64,350 and 95 cents.
Thank you, Brian. Would someone like to offer that resolution? Thank you. Scott?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. And just to remind people, this is the parking lot that was constructed across from St. James Church, near the public warming house on Lake Alice. Correct, Scott?
That's my understanding.
All right. Correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Anyone else have any deep thoughts? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Tonight, under petitions and communications, we have two resolutions acknowledging the retirement of two longstanding and much-loved city employees. First is Mary Jo Igles stood. And I'll read that. Whereas Mary Jo Igles stood has submitted her intent to retire effective August 20, 2021, and whereas Mary Jo began her employment with the city of Fergus Falls on April 10, 1975, as a permanent part-time library assistant, and whereas Mary Jo became a full-time library aide on August 12, 1977, and has remained in this position until the present time, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls to accept Mary Jo's resignation and thank her for 46 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. This resolution was offered by council member Jim Fish.
I'll second.
Seconded by council member Krista Hagberg and adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you.
Next, we have the resolution acknowledging the retirement of Kathy Spory. And whereas Kathy Spory has submitted her intent to retire effective August 30, 2021, and whereas Kathy began employment at the city of Fergus Falls on January 7, 1991, as a receptionist, office coordinator at the senior center, and whereas on July 15, 2007, Kathy became the program supervisor for the senior center and has remained in that position until the present time. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Kathy Spory's resignation and thank her for her 30 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above foregoing resolution was offered at a regular city council meeting by council member Brent Thompson, seconded by council member Justin Arnesson, and adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you both so much for your service. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have eight items. I believe that Anthony is asked to remove items five and eight. Is that correct, Anthony?
Correct.
If there's any other items anyone would like to discuss individually, we can remove them as well. Hearing none, I would look for a resolution to approve the remaining six items.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five is a resolution directing staff to determine the budgetary needs for comprehensive plan and to report options back to the city council. Anthony, did you have a?
I just had a comment as much as anything on it was that if we're going to do a comprehensive plan, I feel that we could try to get it as much centered around the people of Fergus Falls and really not use a consultant. And the reason that I cannot say that is because tonight, we're going to accept a master plan on the Fergus Falls Regional Treatment Center Historic Campus. And we paid for this report, which we're going to look at later on. And at the end of the day, this doesn't tell us anything more than we had, that we had knowledge of before. It says the best use of it is going to be housing. And the next possible use of it could be for, obviously, veterans. And all of those ideas have been floated for the last, at least 20 years on housing. And it's so we don't need to pay somebody big bucks to tell us something we already know. And I think, if we're going to do a plan, it's got to be around about the people of Fergus. We don't need a consultant selling us a bag of goods. And I think we've got the capability to do everything that was in this report ourselves. So I mean, I'll offer the resolution to go ahead to do it, but I just don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars doing it.
And thank you for that, Anthony. If there's a resolution, there's a second, Tom?
I'll second.
And just to remind people, this is just a resolution having staff bring back recommendations. And then just, I want to just point out on that report, just for the public's benefit, that was part of the agreement between SHPO, the legislature in the city, that brought the city $3.49 million. So we can't lose sight of that. You know, we spent money to do that study, but it would also receive $3.49 million as part of that agreement in order to get the regional treatment center.
I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying, it doesn't bring any new ideas, and it doesn't tell us how to go forward. It says the best use is housing and possibly a veterans home type thing. And that's nothing new.
And I agree with your sentiment. I just want to make sure that people don't think we're just out willy-nilly. And that was part of an agreement. That was not our decision. Yes, Tom?
And if I can just make a quick follow-up comment, comparing the two is really apples to oranges, because I totally agree with council member Hicks that I wouldn't have spent a penny on our T C master plan unless we had to, which we did. But the comprehensive plan is completely different in that it's going to really give us a roadmap for future development. Because right now, it's we do everything kind of on a case-by-case basis, whereas a comprehensive plan is going to give us guidelines on what do we want, where do we want it, what do we want it to look like, how's it going to work. So that's why we need that, just for the viewing public to kind of differentiate the two. The comprehensive plan is really what we need to keep the city moving forward and to really have a plan for how we want to grow. And a plan that takes the interests of the residents of Fergus Falls and the businesses and the community in mind. So that's all I got.
And I think that the points are well taken. And as the staff brings us back the information that the resolution asked for, I think we can have a robust debate about what is the best way to move forward. So we have a resolution in a second. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution approving a variance extension for the construction of a detached garage at 228 West Adolphus Avenue.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious that obviously as to why there was the delay, and is the intent to actually build the unit now, or is it going to be, we're looking for an extension on the extension again. I'd just like to know what the intent is. And also to help, I think this is final from reading this, so if you don't build it this time, there will be no further extensions, just so that the applicant understands the clarity that if you don't do it this time, there's no second chance, or third chance, or fourth chance.
And the applicant is in the audience. Wendy DeGree, correct?
Yes.
Would you like to respond? Or do you have any comments?
I don't have any.
But your intention is to do it this time. Right, good. And I will offer the resolution.
Thanks, there's a resolution.
I'll second.
And there's a second. Further questions? Comment. Roll call, please.
Rupert. Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have tonight, we have a first reading of ordinance 178 series, which would amend the zoning map from R1 to R4 for campus addition, as requested by Prairie View Development. We had a lengthy discussion about this at our last council meeting, and tonight we just need someone to introduce this ordinance.
I will introduce it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jim? Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing for the use of tax increment financing for the former mill property for October 18, 2021, at 5:30 here in the city council chambers. And we will call on our community development manager Clara Beck to answer any questions that you might have. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have a request from the owner of the mill building to start looking at the future development of it, and that comes with some different questions about how to move forward with it. So your resolutions there would help give us some options for moving forward with him. Do you have questions about those three separate resolutions?
So we'll take them one at a time. The first is a resolution setting a public hearing for the tax increment financing. Just to remind people that of the costs incurred with the bond attorneys for tax increment financing evaluation study are borne by the developer as part of his cost for the project.
Correct. And he has already made his payment.
Yep, he's made the payment in escrow.
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Caroline?
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development's Redevelopment Grant Program to help fund the development of the former mill property. Anything to add there, Clara?
Nope, just that that application is due right away at the beginning of September, so we will not have had any conversations about TIF yet with this body, but it will be forthcoming.
Any questions? Someone like to offer that resolution?
I got a question, but I can offer the resolution.
Sure.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Go ahead. Anthony?
The matching funds from the city, what source would they come from?
Should I speak to that that we?
Please.
The money man.
Clara, correct me if I'm wrong at all, but we haven't gone into that yet. So we don't have a matching fund source set out. Now, could, if a TIF plan were to be warranted on this, you know, we could explore the option, would the TIF provide the matching funds for that even? I don't know. It's at the beginning stages, but you are not committing to any matching funds at this point, because we don't have that laid out. It's early stages of it.
You know, I would just add that talking to D, that is the most typical method for which a city contributes. So rather than giving 100% TIF financing, it's, D has a program for whatever those funds are available, they cover half of that. So it's kind of like city gives, you know, whatever matching, in this case, maybe TIF.
Yeah.
State can combine to lessen that TIF load on the city. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. On the same subject, item number four is a resolution affirming the council's support for tax increment financing contingent upon the butthole analysis for the former mill property. I believe this is just a requirement of the application. Is that correct?
Yeah, we just need to tell them that we're going to look into it so that they have that.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. That's an exciting project. I just want to say thank you to Clara, to the staff, to Natia from Greater Fergus Falls. I mean, I think we all know that Mill has been a real eyesore and a real thorn in the city's side for decades. So to see that we have a developer at the table who's committed funds and who's made a commitment to looking at redeveloping that site, we've seen some of the plans, and it's exciting. So anyway, thank you to staff and to the city and to also to Greater Fergus Falls for the work on that. That's truly an exciting project. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the staff and the city attorney to draft a purchase agreement between St. Francis Health Services and the city of Fergus Falls for a portion of the city-owned parcel of land located at 702 South Tower Road. And again, we'll call on our community development manager Clara Beck.
Yes, thank you. I was approached by the, I believe she's the CEO of St. Francis Health Services. They are a company that offers, well, they're nonprofit, actually, who offers health services for, I think they run some retirement homes and also some group homes down in like the St. Cloudish area. And they also had a building in Barrett that up until recently was in use, now is not in use. But they have been working with a local company here, another healthcare provider, to potentially move a building into town. They're looking for a space for it. And through conversations with the engineering department and Mark in our GIS department, we determined that there was a parcel of land that would be a nice fit for them, right along, right up next to Veterans Bridge over there on Tower Road. So basically, they put together a letter of intent to show you that they're serious about making an offer on this land, and they're looking to see what you would like to do in return, if you would like to accept it, or if you want to do some negotiating, or what your next steps would be.
So this resolution would just allow the city attorney to draft a purchase agreement, so we could have further discussion on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'd call it a motion.
Motion. Make a motion to directing the city attorney to draft a purchase agreement?
Can we ask, what's the intent of the house that they moved? Is it to be a group home, or is it to be a family, a family home? And is it zoned for that?
It is zoned appropriately. They would need a conditional use permit, I believe, for the eventual use of it.
Someone like to offer that motion?
I'll offer it. I have a question.
Sure. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Second that. Thank you, Krista. Go ahead, Scott.
As far as how the purchase price would be established, would we need to have the lot appraised, or what would be the steps to establish the purchase price?
Well, that would really be up to you guys about how you'd want to move forward with that. I think the purchase price that they've offered initially is based on the assessment by the county. So you could use that number and see if you think that their offer is good from that, or we could go the route of an appraiser. They would like to move quickly on this, and I think appraisals are taking a little bit of time currently just because of the world, I guess. But so they are contracted to start services with the local group that they're working with, and I'm sorry, I cannot remember who they are off the top of my head, but they're contracted to start sometime in November. So they want to really get a move on. So again, up to you guys how you would want to approach that purchase price.
Come another question on that?
Yeah.
Would this be eligible for the $10,000 credit from the city and the county?
No, it would not be a single-family home.
Otherwise, we might as well just give it to them.
Brent, do you have a comment?
Now, if this is going to be basically a group home, do we know how many group homes are in this area? Because I have a section in my ward where there are several group homes clustered in one area, and I had a lot of concern about that when I went door-to-door, because I know they're supposed to be spread out in such a way where they're not all clustered together. So I'm just kind of curious, are there any other ones in close vicinity?
As far as I know, there are no other group homes in that area. It is down the hill a little ways from like the CBHH and those mental health facilities up there, but I wouldn't say that they're the same neighborhood.
Yeah, because Oriole Drive in our area, there's two or three of them in there, and they're all in close proximity. And I know that was a concern for a bunch of the people in the area.
Okay.
So the motion is for the city attorney to draft a purchase agreement that we would then consider presumably two weeks from tonight, assuming that negotiations continue with the?
The purchase price is kind of the big one. I mean, I'm going to need a little guidance as to what you would like to do. So the question would be, is are you comfortable working off of the tax assessed value for real estate taxes, or would you like to?
Is that typical?
How did we do the last property we sold?
Right, what did we do?
I think we've done it a couple different ways. We've gotten our own appraisal, so we know what we're working from. And we can then at least have something that we base a proposal on. We have gone with the shop go, we've required two appraisers to appraise the property, and a third appraiser, determine which appraisal is more reasonable. It maybe isn't to that extent that you need to go to that extent, but I think at a minimum, you should get an appraisal done.
Yes.
So that you at least got something you could have in the file that said that would be adequate, reasonable. I don't know, I mean, one, your city attorney does not give advice on valuation of property. And I think we just have to base it on a professional report. It may take a little longer, but I guess that's, I think that's proven.
The other option might be, if I remember, the last piece of bare land we sold, we got a market analysis, which can be accomplished, you know, from a Realtor, that's a professional opinion. If that's relatively close to the assessed value, I think we know we're in the ballpark, and you would probably be able to move pretty quickly. That might be a third option to consider.
I mean, that may be quicker. I mean, and at least you got something.
Is that acceptable?
As long as we have a professional come in and give us a reasonable, you know, give us their opinion on it.
That's what we did with Lonnie Bowley's property. I would make the motion that we do that.
So I meant yours, and I'm trying to thank Justin, did you?
It was Scott and Krista. I would say that if it's likely not going to be, you know, three times this $10,000 amount or whatever, then it's not going to blow us up one way or the other. I think having a professional opinion would be adequate as far as my concerns. But, you know, if it was going to be $12,000 instead of 10,000, I don't think any of us are going to really get too worked up about it. But if it was going to be $25,000 instead of 10,000, then we probably would find that it was worth having some professional opinion on it. And given its location right along the river, it wouldn't surprise me if it came in substantially more than $10,000. But then again, it is, even if it was twice that, $20,000 isn't terribly high for an open lot along the river. I think having a professional opinion would be adequate for this.
I think that market analysis is going to tell us that they're going to use similar to the Carville's deal, appraisers, it's not quite as in-depth. But, okay, so it's acceptable to amend the motion, Scott and Krista?
Yes.
Direct the city attorney to get a market analysis and then execute a purchase agreement for us to consider. Any further questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,774,715.74. If anyone has any questions, direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. Scott?
I've got one question to raise.
Please.
I spoke to Bill earlier, and this is just to get something on our radar. It isn't necessarily to criticize anything. But over a year ago, we raised the subject of credit card fees and how we pay them and how we collect them and whatnot. And the idea was that we were going to review that, and we haven't done that yet, to my knowledge. And I know that Bill has not prepared to give us a report on this tonight. But given the fact that we had, what, $24,000 in credit card fees as a part of this resolution record tonight, it's a significant enough number that I think it's time for us to do that review.
All right. Let's let Bill get through the budget cycle and be able to breathe.
We're speaking the same language. I said it would be later this fall, probably.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. We'll call on Finance Director Bill Somer next to give us an update on the Port Authority pre-sale summary of the bond issuance. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Port Authority had a meeting at 4 o'clock today, and one of the items was approving, setting the sale for the bonds. The resolution was providing for the competitive negotiated sale of $1,465,000 general obligation bonds. So I included the memo from the Port Authority packet, also in your council packet, just so you have, you know, kept up to date where we're going with those bonds. These are the bonds that are financing the downtown riverfront project, the phase one that we're under construction right now, as we see happening over there. So we're looking at this $1.46 million. Now, that amount could change a bit. Brian and I are working on what contingency levels should we keep in that project budget, so we're kind of fine-tuning that. We'll come back with a possible adjustment there, which is fine, because when we come back, let's see, September 7, the city council will be approving a resolution consenting to the issuance of the bonds. The actual sale will take place then on September 20, and we'll have that back to the Port Authority to award those bonds. And then we'll actually receive those proceeds in October. So you can see it's quite a process we go through to get bonds in. But just FYI for you tonight, to let you know what happened at the Port Authority meeting, since it's, you know, your project and we're working together on it with the port.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Under old and unfinished business, I will call on Community Development Manager Clara Beck to introduce our guest this evening, who will go through the Regional Treatment Center Master Plan Study that was recently completed. Thank you, Clara.
Yes, thank you. So we have some members from Collaborative Design Group who are going to be joining us via Zoom tonight. I think we have Bill and we have Gianna. And can you guys tell me if you need, can you hear us okay here?
Sounds good.
Okay. And then are they both co-hosts?
Perfect.
Okay. Well, then I will, oh, and Bill Smith just joined too. Okay. So I will let them do their presentation, and then hopefully So I will let them do their presentation, and then hopefully there will be some time for questions, and they can provide some answers. And then I believe there is a resolution in front of you to adopt the master plan. So without further ado.
Collaborative Design, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Clara mentioned, I'm Bill Hickey with Collaborative Design Group. And with me tonight are Bill Smith of BECO Associates and Gianna King of Economic Development Services. We're going to provide a quick summary of the report, the master plan, and walk you through sort of the major components of it. As has been mentioned, this was, excuse me, there we go. Part of the negotiated process with Minnesota Historical Society. And it's important as we go through this, when we refer to the campus, please keep in mind that that refers to the historical extents of the Regional Treatment Center, not just the surviving Kirkbride Building, which is what we all have in mind and of course is a huge part of this. But it also includes other portions of the former campus. The goal of this in my mind is not only to freshen the data up, but to provide a guide for stewardship going forward of this really tremendous resource in the city. Key aspects of this process are the public engagement, reviewing the historic integrity of the campus elements as they survive, and including in that going through existing conditions of not only the vacant buildings, but the buildings now owned privately by the county and in a large part the open space. One other quirk of this is that we should note that the cemetery is part of this study, but we recognize the cemetery is outside of the city limits. So the master plan extends beyond the city limits proper and the RTC building itself. And the subtext behind all this is to develop a plausible reuse plan. Bill, do you want to talk a little bit about the engagement process? What you're here with there, Bill?
Okay, am I in? Thanks, Bill. So I led the community engagement element of this master plan study. Next slide. Bill? Next slide?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. The community engagement is a required element of studies like this. And we find our experience has shown that when the community is involved, we end up with more successful outcomes because we have worked hard to get community buy-in and to try to come to consensus about, in this case, master plan elements and the reuse. The elements of the community engagement included coordination with an advisory committee that was appointed by the council, coordination with staff. We had several updates on the city's website and also articles that were published in the Daily Journal. We spent some time early in the study conducting stakeholder interviews, and we held two community meetings. This last element is something that I really want to focus on this evening. The advisory committee directed the consulting team to conduct a community survey and to gauge support for the project. And that was one of the things they were very concerned about early on in the study. Let me get the next slide, please. The survey took place between February and March of 2020. We had electronic surveys and also hard copies. In total, we got 1,400 responses from the community. That's a pretty good number. I think that's a reliable indication, number one, that people are interested. And number two, that you can really sort of take it to the bank with what they told us in the survey. We had five questions in the survey, and we were really keen on learning about the reuse possibilities.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
Concerns about what reuse options ought to be. Next slide. Just to give you some quick overview on the survey findings. Seventy-two percent of the respondents believe that reusing the RTC is feasible. Ten percent weren't sure. And 18% felt that reusing the treatment center is infeasible. Those who believe it's feasible felt that the buildings are a historic treasure and therefore should be preserved. They felt that reusing the RTC could present some benefits to the city of Fergus Falls and that retrofitting the buildings for some adaptive reuse is entirely feasible. Those who did not believe that preserving the building is feasible, thought that the cost would be too high, the buildings were too old, couldn't be retrofitted to accommodate today's needs, and that too much time and money would be required to find a viable market reuse. So in the last slide on the public engagement, this is kind of what we learned. And I think this is very important to stress. The majority of survey respondents support reuse of the Regional Treatment Center. And those who oppose this are in the minority, however, they raised some important points. And their concerns centered around the economic health of the community and the need to find a balance between the cost of preserving and reusing and the cost of addressing unmet local needs. So there's an opportunity cost that people raised. Economic vitality was at the core, both the support and opposition. And alternatives that were identified for the greatest reuse potential are those that are economically sustainable, that can increase the regional draw to Fergus Falls, do not result in an undue high tax burden, and result in a positive economic impact where there are benefits the community can realize. And also uses that would balance those costs and benefits. So that is the presentation on the community engagement.
And it's worth noting that we start with talking about reuse of the Kirkbride because it was abundantly clear that any successful master plan had to incorporate a vision for that reuse. Much of the rest of the historic campus is being reused successfully and is in hands that will maintain it. But of course, the big chunk of the campus, the big RTC building, is that open-ended question at this point. So the master plan begins with confirmation of what survives as historically significant. That's a phrase, both significance and historic integrity will come up often in these sorts of studies. Basically, what is intact, what still carries its historic weight, and what perhaps has been lost also. So the study does go through and assesses those different components and looks at what is their condition? What is their physical condition? And what is their impactness in terms of historic qualities or historic merit? Much of the open space associated with the RTC, of course, is now Kirkbride Park and is in city hands and well-maintained and obviously well-used. Of the buildings, many of the smaller buildings, most of the smaller buildings, have been disposed to private or county ownership. And they are in good condition. They've been reused or are, in the cases of the nurses' cottages, you know, being reused. And those have been successful projects. So the report then documents this. This is sort of the baseline, this is where things begin and where we look moving forward. It also looks at what land use, land use as I should say, might evolve over time for the campus. So the Kirkbride Park, for instance, is going to be a city park for the foreseeable future. But closer into the main Kirkbride Building, with repurposing will come need for changes to some of the land use. And that is documented in the report. We're also looking to document what aspects of the existing conditions are important. The view of the majestic building sort of crowning the ridge there, that's a really important part of the historic quality or historic integrity of the site. So looking at how new buildings, how new work can not only not compromise that, but can accentuate that and support those qualities. Burning all this down into guiding principles for future development. This also came out of much of the engagement work. Again, you'll recognize some of this from what Bill just described. But yes, preserve the historic aspects. Look for an economic catalyst that's financially sustainable. Make something that's attractive not only to community residents, but also capitalizes on the nationwide draw that this building has. And above all, keep transparency in all the work that's done. Part of that, a big change of this will be how people interact with the site. And so we've spent a little bit of time talking about how in the broader campus, transportation plays a role. Bill, do you want to jump in?
There. So this transportation element of the master plan is a very important element. With the reuse, transportation needs are going to change. And there will be a need to accommodate residents and their guests, an increased number of visitors, tourists. Not all those people will have a car. And what our analysis showed was that the campus, in its existing condition, is really oriented toward automobile traffic and circulation. And so we brought our attention to a multimodal movement and circulation plan. On the left is a diagram that illustrates the existing circulation. I won't go through all of it, but some of the highlights are that the sidewalks right now are discontinuous. There aren't any bicycle facilities. The trail to the cemetery is rudimentary cow path, it must have been old, it seems. And that there really isn't any accommodation for buses and for guests. And so we address those in this diagram that shows the concepts for the future. The pedestrian linkages that we developed are shown. And also they're shown how they interface with the street system. We wanted to make sure that there are ADA accommodations for the pedestrians. And also where the pedestrians would cross first street, we wanted to make sure that over time, there are some observations that are conducted to just determine if those crossings are safe. The traffic volumes are sort of in the neighborhood of 6,000 a day. Not too high, but if they get any higher, then there might need to be some special traffic control for pedestrians. Let me get the next slide. A couple of ideas that we came up with for bicycle traffic. One is the shared bicycle pedestrian path. That's the one that's shown on the left. There is one location on the campus where we have room to accommodate that. The other is where we separate pedestrians and bicycles. And you can see in the diagram on the right, we've got bicycles on one side of an existing road and pedestrians on the other. And that's it.
So as part of the master plan, we also take a look at 25 years as sort of a long-term view. What is likely to change? What guidance can the plan provide? As I mentioned, stewardship's a big component of this. We expect the park remains a park, that the county retains and continues to use the western buildings. Veterans Home remains, those sorts of things. Beyond the nurses' college, presently it's vacant, fallow agricultural land. Long-term, there might be an opportunity to do appropriate development there using some of the geometries and aspects of the nurses' college as guidance for developing a little bit of additional work there. But by and large, the focus, the opportunity here is the main Kirkbride Building. And keeping those guiding principles in mind as we go through all of it is important. So I mentioned, you know, the clear need was expressed that there had to be a reuse study. So we drilled into that, and we'll circle back now within the master plan or as an adjunct to the master plan is the need for reuse of the Kirkbride Building. Gianna, we'll walk you through the highlights of that, a fresh look.
Mute, Gianna.
Bill, can you slip to the next slide, and then we'll come back to this one? Thank you. So the reuse analysis included a review of similar facilities. And these were discussed with the advisory committee. Wilmer had a state hospital, Oatona and Orphanage, and Traverse City, Michigan, another Kirkbride facility. The committee considered eight reuse options, and then we narrowed that and did an in-depth analysis of two. The two that were most important to the group as anchor tenants were residential healing for PTSD and brain trauma. But that market was determined to be not viable due to the fact that typically with PTSD and brain trauma, there are a lot of CO diagnoses. There are also trends in the market and insurance. All of that, all the in-depth insights into that are in the report for your review. The good news is that housing is a very viable market. And it is viable from the perspective of ownership as well as rental, mixed income, seniors, veterans, and supportive housing. And we were fortunate, you had several recent housing studies that helped us. And in addition to housing as an anchor tenant, Bill, it's the black back aside. There are really other things that can support this use, and they will stimulate more engagement with the facility by the community and the visitors. So it won't just be the residents. There may be some small-scale retail that could support the anchor tenants. We don't see food or lodging really for treatment because treatment isn't a viable option. But, you know, a lot of assisted living facilities are senior housing, and this would probably not be assisted living. But senior housing, they'll occasionally have, you know, an apartment or two or a room or two that can be rented to families. Arts are a great way to enliven the campus. And culinary arts were a favorite of the advisory committee. But Arts Midwest has done a number of activities out there. And there are a handful of ways that are identified in the report that can bring arts into the campus. And then there's also an opportunity for some of these, some small offices. But the big anchor tenant, the one that really needs to make things work from a financial perspective, is housing. Bill, on to the next. There we go. So you had some great studies that were fresh, and one of them actually just wrapped up very recently. very recently in May of 2020, and really helped us with some of the conclusions and the data. So you had a task force in 2019 that wanted to increase the available housing inventory, support affordable housing for all, maintain homes we have. And so housing is consistent with your own plans, and it is supported by market studies. So you've got market studies that document the opportunity. It's got a lovely campus setting that will work well to attract owners or renters. The Kirkbride building layout itself is well-suited to housing. East and West Detach offer opportunities to phase the development and to segment the markets. Some of the other smaller uses would be complementary to housing, and it's a viable project for state and federal housing finance programs and historic tax credits. You did have a proposal once. It did not get funded, but we looked into the reasons for that, and it was not, it was related specifically to the developer, not to anything else. So you should feel confident that with the right developer, that your odds are, it's always competitive, but you didn't get knocked out, you got knocked out because of the specific developer, not because of other reasons.
The other component of this, of course, is evaluating that existing building. What is, what is its condition? What are the likely issues going to be for reuse? And are any of these compromise the values we talked about in the beginning with the master plan set? First and foremost, there is a really solid building. It is structurally in good shape. It has all the things that made Kirkbride buildings special are still there, the access to daylight, the double-headed corridors, the placemaking that goes into the buildings. Very well built. There are certainly some issues, but they are nothing that can't be resolved. And we'll conclude sort of with a list of the priorities there, but just some really fantastic historic features still remain. Some of the interiors are not pristine, but they have many, many features that are well equipped to be used. So we included as a detailed portion of the master plan, proposed land use, not designs, but just discussion of what is likely to happen. Obviously, the front or the south exposure facing the park is going to stay and should stay as open space, green space, and not become cluttered. The back or the north side of the complex or the inside of the U, historically, that's where the service buildings that started this process off were, and it's the obvious place for continued development of service, other aspects, what needs to happen to make these buildings function as viable reuse for housing. We studied both apartment and condominium layout with diagram, which is just an example of that. The buildings, as Jenna mentioned, can be phased or broken into components very well. So the remaining balance of the state bonding funds would provide a significant amount of stabilization and help to make this ready for a developer to come in. Most immediately, the west detached flat roof of the whole complex, there's just a small portion of flat roof, and of course, that's the part that needs attention. But the rest of the roof does need some maintenance level upkeep. There's missing chingles here and there, some flashing that is loose and needs work. Site work and ventilation are other important aspects. I'll let you look through the list. I want to be respectful of your time, so we will jump into just seeing if you have questions or if there are other questions or comments for us.
Thank you very much, Bill, Jenna, and Bill, for that report. Thank you, Scott, and Chris, the rest of the members of the task force that worked on this. Does anyone have any questions for?
I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
In the survey that you did, it appeared that about one-third of those that you got replies from were from out of Fergus Falls. Do you have a breakdown on how they voted for reuse or not reuse?
Yes, we do. There is a report, in fact, the entire report that documents survey findings is in the appendix of the master plan. And I can generally tell you that the support for maintaining and preserving the treatment center was uniform across, so that even those people, those people in the city and people who were from other parts of Otter Tail County, and there were in fact a few who were from other parts of the United States, not many, the majority of those people were in support of preserving the RTC.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Andrew, do you have any comments on, so if the council accepts this master plan, going forward, that doesn't, that guides us in the redevelopment of the campus, but it doesn't bind us to any one particular development or developer or any such thing, correct?
Yeah, Your Honor, council members, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. With that, would somebody, Scott, I'd look for you for some comments. Would someone like to offer a resolution to accept the master-
I'd love to offer that resolution.
Thank you. Scott, someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Caroline? Scott, did you have some comments from your experience with the group?
I wanted to thank those who were participating, first of all. There was a lot of time that was put in, although it seems like a long time ago. The initial work that was done to get the team rolling and to do a lot of the collecting of information was before COVID hit. And so it's easy to think back as though it never happened in some ways, but it was a lot of work done and a lot of effort on the front end. And then things just kind of paused for a while, like everything else, last year. But in the meantime, as things got rolling again this spring, very good work was done. And again, thank you to those who participated, you know, on the committee. As far as the presentation that was made here, I'd like to just hit a couple of real high points, just to really stress them. There's been comments made over the course of even tonight's meeting that indicate there's still a prejudice against this development and reuse. And the fact is, there is no information in this report that shows that the support is there, not only in our community, but across the area regionally and beyond, for reuse, and that the building is in solid condition. They've documented that. They've shown that it's structurally stable. It's not some dangerous place that just by existing is causing us any great trouble. The fact that it exists and is a really significant asset for the city of Fergus Falls is something that we need to take to heart. And now we have an opportunity, with over a million and a half dollars still sitting in this fund, to take care of this asset, fix the roof, take care of the ventilation, take care of this water that's been getting into the building, and make this asset something special. And we'll be looking forward to those opportunities, to how we might do that, but there's a timeline that has to happen, and we've got to get that ball rolling to get that money used within the next 12 months, and to take care of this building, and to take care of this site, and to move forward on the recommendations that have been made in this master plan.
Thank you, Scott. Again, thank you to the work of the committee. Thank you to Mr. Hickey, Mr. Smith, Ms. King. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your presentation tonight. If you have any other questions before we call on the vote-
Is there a link, is there going to be a link to the full report on the city website?
We'll make sure that we have-
I think it's already on the website, actually. And for what it's worth, the presentation tonight, when they said it was a brief presentation, is true. The actual report is over 360 pages. There's a lot of detail. There's a lot of background that really supports everything that's been said tonight.
I know a lot of work went into it, so again, thank you, Scott. Brent?
My one question that I have, I mean, you said there was 1,400 people who were involved with this. How were these people found and how were they chosen? Is this something where it was put out and the people contacted the people who were doing this master plan? Or was a random thing put out where people were, you know, chosen? Because I found out even like when it came to the downtown master plan, people who have an interest and want to see something done will go above and beyond to be heard. And the people who just don't want this to go any further, don't want to be bothered with it. And so this just looks like something, kind of like with the master plan, where you've got 1,400 people who want to see this thing saved, or a very minute amount that want to see it, you know, just be done with. That's the problem I have when I see the 1,400. You know, I'd like to know how they were found and everything else, because otherwise, it's just like when we did the master plan, you had the same people at all the meetings, and we got what we got. And this one here, you know, where did these 1,400 people come from? And did, you know, did they come into this with just the idea that we want to save it? Versus just a handful of people who being able to say, hey, you know, let's just move on with this. So that's the question I would have.
Thanks, Brent. The only final comment I would have is I think the city's done a very good job over the last four years of moving forward on this property, seeing the potential without letting it be paralyzing to the other projects that we're trying to get done. If you remember, in 2016, 2017, this council was very divided. We worked hard with the state historic preservation office along with the state legislature. Staff did a wonderful job of coming to a compromise that was reasonable but achievable, and we did that. We've got $3.49 million, I mentioned. We got the back cleaned up, and today, hundreds of people each week visit up there for the concerts. People are visiting the campus, the nurses' cottage. There's been multiple millions of dollars invested in that property to facilitate assisted living housing, which is a need in the community. So again, I just want to compliment the council on your ability to move forward on a difficult project while still not, you know, while still accomplishing other goals of the city and not letting this paralyze as it has for 20 years. So this is part of the process. This is part of the agreement that the city did. I want to thank the consultants for their work, and I just look forward to the city continuing to move forward on this, on this project while simultaneously looking at the needs of the entire city. So with that, there's a resolution to accept the regional treatment center master plan, and I will call for the vote.
Rupert?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
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 No.
Fish?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There is no new business this evening. Lynn, do you have any announcements that are not on the, on the, everything's on the agenda? I don't believe there's any other business to come before the council.
I have one quick thing related to city activities. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to Pam Maxfeldt and everyone who ran the baseball season, all of the umpires and all the coaches and all the staff that worked so hard for that. I think it was a great year, and a lot of kids learn a lot and have a really good time. And so thanks to Pam and the whole team that runs that.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. With that, we're adjourned.